This conference will now be recorded.
Clerk Soick speaking.
Hess?
Councilwoman Hess here.
Johnson?
Mayor Protam here.
Mitchell?
Councilman Mitchell here.
Noak?
Councilman Noak here.
And Walagora?
Mayor Walagora here. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just a quick review of our format here. If you're not speaking, please mute your phone to keep down a little bit of the background noise. I will call for citizen or resident, excuse me, public comment when that time comes and just kind of give everybody a chance to speak your mind if you would like to, if you have anything to address council with. First, I will ask for a moment of silence, if you will, to acknowledge the passing of our former mayor, Camille Nakowski. Okay, thank you. Any modifications to the agenda this evening? Nothing? Approval of the... Excuse me?
I said no.
Approval of the minutes, a regular session of April 6, 2020. Any issues or corrections on that? None. All right, thank you. All right, next up is citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. This is the only time during tonight's council meeting that citizens are allowed to address council. If you would like to, please chime in or I think there's a button for to put a question mark in the chat spot down on the meeting part. Anyone? All right, I hear no one, so thank you. Next is our consent agenda, bills to be allowed in the amount of $493,719.46. Be as the city charter, reappointment of city attorney Bill Piper and clerk, treasurer, finance director Anna Soick for a two-year term expiring April 20, 2022.
Councilman Noak, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Mayor Protam, Johnson, second.
Clerk Soick speaking. Hess?
Hess, yes.
Johnson?
Johnson, yes.
Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Noak?
Noak, yes.
And Walagora?
Walagora, aye.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you. Next up, no presentations or announcements. So I have a proclamation. Recognizing Arbor Day, so the Court of Ordinances requires Arbor Day to be annually recognized by a proclamation. Arbor Day in the state of Michigan is the last Friday of April, which will be April 24, 2020. And Arbor Day proclamation is a requirement and will assist the city in maintaining its recertification as a Tree City USA community. Therefore, it may be, it is my recommendation, oh, sorry, Rich, I stole your thunder. I don't know if you're about to read that or not. So therefore, the city engineer recommends that the attached proclamation be issued by myself. The proclamation is whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that special day be set aside for planting trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil and by wind and water, cut heat and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce light-giving oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable resources giving us paper, wood, and wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Walagora, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Alpena, do hereby proclaim April 24, 2020, as Arbor Day in the city of Alpena, and I encourage all area citizens to celebrate Arbor Day in our community and to support efforts to protect our trees. Further, I urge all residents to plant trees to promote the well-being of this and future generations. Next up, there's no public hearing, so we are at report of officers. First is the Finance Director's quarterly report of January through March of 2020.
Okay. So with this report, we should be at 25, I'm sorry, 75% of budget. If you look at our revenue, the budget, the percent budget received is 76%, so that's good. That's above budget. Our expenditures is at 73%. That's the percent of budget used, so that is below budget, which is great. So both of those resulted in $38,160 to the good. In March, we went through our budget sessions and we are estimating to be negative $281,000 negative for this fiscal year, which is $1,000 over the original budget that was passed the last year. However, this afternoon, I was on a webinar with MML and they said that we have, well, we have two more sales tax and revenue sharing payments yet in this fiscal year, and we're going to receive one on April 30, and they said it should be about the same because it's based on January and February sales, which was, you know, before the coronavirus hit. So that one should be good, but then our final payment, which would be in June, is probably going to be cut about 50 to 60%. And I'm estimating that hit to be about $75,000 to $85,000. So if we add that to the $281,000 that we were already projecting to be negative, that takes us back up to about, I'm guessing we're going to be somewhere around the amended budget negative of $374,000, so somewhere in that neighborhood. I wasn't really planning on going through each of the lines, line by line, because a lot of them are the same as last quarter, but if you have any questions about anything, just go ahead and ask.
Anna, Councilman Noak, just wondering, as I usually ask this question every quarter, is there anything that's standing out to you that, you know, besides what you've already explained, anything else that you see that would be out of line, any department or anything, you know, that is going to be out of line either for expenditures especially?
Hmm. Well, it's just, just the uncertainty of the situation that we're in, that makes me nervous because you just don't know where things are going to end up. You know, there is also going to be, there is also going to be a reduction in the Act 51 money that we get for the roads because I think that has to do with the gas and weight tax and, you know, the price of gas is down and sales are down. So, you know, that's going to impact that fund.
Right.
So we're just planning a very conservative budget for next year, but I think we still might have to trim a little bit more because we just, there's just so much uncertainty and I want to, I want to feel comfortable. I think that we can always bring stuff back in if we need to and if things look better, but we just don't know. I wish I had a crystal ball.
I wish you did too, so, all right. Well, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right.
I'll just need a motion for receipt and file.
Yep.
Sorry.
I move we receive and file. Is it Councilman Johnson?
Councilman Noak, second.
Johnson?
Johnson, yes.
Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Noak?
Noak, yes.
Walagora?
Walagora, aye.
And Hess?
Hess, yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you, Anna. Next up is the Chief of Fire EMS report. Chief Orbusch?
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Just fine.
Just fine.
Late last week, I sent an email through to the manager to each of you, giving just a few updates on the fire EMS department's response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Just to highlight a couple of those changes, for some time now, we've been planning and putting safety procedures in place. We're doing temperature and symptom assessment and documentation every 12 hours. Elevated temperature is the sentinel symptom of COVID-19, so if we have employees with a temperature, we need to disinclude them right away. We have not had that happen. We've mandated personal protective equipment, including downs and 95 masks and gloves on all medical runs, and have worked closely with Alpena County Emergency Management in maintaining adequate supplies of those in addition to our own supply coordinators. We've increased the frequency and detail of ambulance and facility cleaning. Each ambulance is thoroughly decontaminated after every single run, and once a day, they're further decontaminated with UVC lights that we purchased for that purpose. We've also trained on the state emergency protocols, which have changed our medical procedures significantly, particularly aerosolized treatments like breathing treatments at CPAP, and also a significant reduction of cardiac arrest time for considering termination of efforts. Normally, if you have a cardiac arrest in the field, after 30 minutes, you contact medical control for the possibility of terminating efforts. Under the new protocols, it's only 10 because of the COVID problems. We have worked with Alpena Community College and have secured some alternative housing for some of our personnel that are concerned about taking the virus home to their family. We have a number of young parents here and they don't want to take the virus home, and so we've got a place that if they choose to self-isolate, these are people that are not yet sick, it will maintain the workforce. Our biggest concern at fire is maintaining enough employees once people start getting sick to be able to still beat the demand. Metal Lodge is our biggest news. Over the weekend, a number of patients tested positive at Metal Lodge, and of course, everyone that is in or out of there gets there via us, and so our people get exposed at the same time. In the case of Metal Lodge this weekend, they found, let's see, four confirmed cases, one that they transported to the hospital and that we returned earlier today, and four staff members that were affected. So our cases increased from two cases in Alpena County to 15 cases as of this morning, probably higher now. I didn't look it up in the afternoon numbers. A 650% increase in COVID-19 cases in Alpena County, so certainly something that we're concerned about. The hospital reports at this point that they have 38 inpatients, one COVID-positive, three pending testing, and they're using Michigan Medicine's lab, which allows for 24-hour turnaround. Prior to today, all testing was done through the state lab, which was much busier and had a longer timeframe for turnaround, sometimes as long as seven to 10 days. So I think that will be a big help for us. Let's see. There's a rumor going around that Metal Lodge is accepting COVID patients from downstate. That's not true, never has been. And I think the real takeaway from this, oh, in the memo, I told you that we had a cardiac arrest in Long Rapids that involved a likely COVID-19 patient. We found out today that that patient was negative, and therefore, there was no exposure to the first responders or paramedic on that call. Very happy to hear that. Unfortunately, the patient did not recover from that, no matter what the cause was. Another AFD medic that had developed a rash that's consistent was tested along with his family and also came up negative, so he'll be returning to the workforce tomorrow. Very happy about that. On the good news, bad news side, our EMS volume is down about 40%. All elective activities at hospitals have been canceled for some time now, and most patients don't want to go to the hospital for fear of catching it from somebody else. And so both emergencies and transfers are way down. But the good news is that that allows us to handle COVID emergencies. The bad news is that it cuts our revenue down, so that's an issue. We did receive $60,000 in federal stimulus money out of what they call the CARES program. Ambulance services across the country were provided that, knowing the volume would be down and that a cost would be up for personal protective care and so forth. I really believe that what's happening at this point is the rest of the state is starting to ramp down from the pandemic and Alpena is ramping up. In the case of Metal Lodge, if we use the same model that was just used in other long-term care facilities across the country and downstate, there are 109 residents there. Most will probably contract the disease, as many as half may die of it. That's a huge, huge hit to our community, so I'm very, very concerned. The take-home messages, stay home, stay safe, stand on hand washing, vigorous and aggressive hand washing can make a big difference. Cover your cough, wear masks in public, even the homemade cloth ones are fine. They primarily protect other people from you, not you from other people, by the way, just in case you weren't aware of that. And of course, maintaining social distancing. Things like this meeting being remote can do a lot to slow down the spread of the pandemic. At this point in time, the total number of cases across the United States is similar to the 2019 flu epidemic, except that this one is nowhere near done, and as it continues and mutates and changes, we will far surpass that down the line. Just partway through, we've already met the flu season, so very concerned about that. The department is very concerned about it. The other ambulance providers in the area have kind of bugged out, and so we're handling everything at this point.
Chief? You all set, chief?
You're echoing my name.
Yeah, I don't know if it's me or if it's Bill Piper.
You're better now.
Am I better now? Chief, that CARES award grant or grant award, was that for the city or the county?
For the city.
Okay, thank you.
That's the only other question that I have, and it was kind of a budgetary question, chief, is I just wanted to be sure that you said you had adequate supplies currently. Is there anything else that we need to do as far as setting aside some budget money in some way to make sure that you can provide or purchase what you need? I don't know how we could do this. Maybe Rachel, I've asked you this question earlier, maybe you can answer that. But first question is, is like, you know, you said you have adequate supply and with it ramping up here, you know, I want to be sure that you have a way to purchase above, you know, exactly what you need in a quick turnaround case. So I just want to make sure we have something set up that that can happen.
Councilman, I really appreciate your concern there. Unfortunately, purchasing is generally not an option at this point. The federal government has snapped up everything that's available and then rations it back out as needed. The good news is that Alpena County Emergency Management is doing an excellent job of snagging as much of that as they can and routing it into Alpena. We've got people on each of our three shifts that are specialized in material, EMS materials and supplies, and they're continuing to look for vendors and to find sources for additional supplies. We do have adequate budget at the moment to buy what we can buy, but most of the things are coming through the feds and low cost at this point. But thank you very much. I appreciate you thinking of us.
All right, thank you, chief.
Thank you. Sir?
Anything else for Chief Orbusch? Any questions? So we receive and file, report then.
Councilman Noak, I move we receive and file.
Johnson, second.
Okay, Clerk Soick speaking. Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Noak?
Councilman Noak, yes.
Walagora?
No, there you go. Sorry. Walagora, aye.
Hess?
Hess, yes.
And Johnson?
Johnson, yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you, Anna. Next up, Chief of Police Report. Chief Jett, you there?
I'm here, sir. Some of the information that Chief Orbusch covered would also be, would pertain to the PD as far as obtaining supplies and so forth, so I won't tread over that territory again. Just kind of an overview with the department. Currently, we have been very fortunate not to have any of the officers come down sick. Other departments cannot make that claim, and some departments have been decimated by this virus. Downstate, it's uncommon to see 30% or 40% of the officers taken out of the service by this. So we've been fortunate so far that we've been able to dodge that bullet. The officers have been very diligent in cleaning the office, the squad cars, wiping down every surface. We think that's probably gone a long ways. Again, supplies can be a hot commodity, but so far, actually through the generosity of a few businesses and citizens, we've received some supplies for cleaning, so very much appreciated there. To date, as far as enforcement, we have seven documented, and I want to stress documented, reports of the violation of the governor's order, one of which has been forwarded to the prosecutor's office for review for possible charges. But I can safely say that there's likely been far more, more informal contacts with the citizens or through the phone calls that we've received tips about. The officers were still, still in the, I'd say, education phase of this, of trying to get people to comply, and for the most part, we've had pretty good luck with that. Calls for service in general have been down, much like the fire department. I think most people realize the seriousness of this, that it's nothing to be fooling around with, and we've had pretty good compliance, all in all, so we're very happy about that. I do have some comments that I would like to offer at a later time on the lawn care issue. If I may reserve some time for that, I'd be grateful. Other than that, that's all I have.
All right, absolutely, chief. That won't be an issue.
Thank you.
I will ask for your input and intended to. Any other questions for chief on his report? All right, let's receipt and file that one as well, please.
Johnson, I move we receive and file.
Mitchell, ask port.
Clerk Soick speaking. Noak?
Yes. Noak, yes.
Walagora?
Walagora, aye.
Hess?
Hess, yes.
Johnson?
Johnson, yes.
And Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you. Thank you, chief. Next up is unfinished business is the boat launch permit fees. Don Gilman, your memo, did you plan on making your recommendation?
Yes. So at the December 19 council meeting of 2019, this thing was tabled and I was asked to look into the possibilities of costs of a free or reduced launch permit fee for behind the post office. I did that. I wrote down the numbers of what a free launch would look like, but, and then I also recommended in the memo to leave things the way they are, but after giving it a little bit more thought, I thought that we could actually, if council desires, do a half-price or $25 launch permit for any citizen that lives within the city limits of Alpena. That's very easy to do. The $25 covers the cost of the permit and the clerk's office or whomever may be writing it up, and probably at the most, the expense of lost revenues is the $800 to $1,000 on the worst-case scenario. So without going into much, I mean, we beat this round for different reasons over the years, but so I would recommend that we did just go with a $25 launch permit fee for city residents. That way, they all use the same stickers. It's not an issue for law enforcement what launch they're at. It would just be a lot easier, and the impact to the revenues will be minimal.
This is Walagora. Thank you, Don. I agree with Don's latest proposal as far as it just seems incredibly more simple than doing a free launch behind the post office with the different colors and the different, everything that kind of went along with that. At the same time, I agree with the residents that have asked for a reduction as being city residents and obviously paying city taxes on a lot of different things here for us. So I agree with Don's proposal and of charging city residents half the cost of the normal, and then just using it at whatever launch that those permits already permit. So I'll leave that up to anyone else's discussion or questions for Don and possible recommendation.
Councilwoman?
Go ahead, Amber.
Thank you. I think having the reduction, I do have a question. So the reduced fee, would you still be able to use either launch site? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct, Amber.
Okay. I think that's, you know, may a fair compromise. I really would like to see at some point that city residents have the option for very, either a free or a nominal fee because we don't charge citizens for the use of any other parks in any way unless they're renting it for a private occasion. And I know the boat harbor has its own costs, but it is a separate site. And, you know, 20, the last census show that almost a quarter of our city population lives in poverty, and the $50, which like I said, 25 is better than 50, really could go a long way in households that maybe already have to get a license for their boat, and if they do fish, have to get a fishing license. So offering a low or no-cost way, I think, would be ideal on the road. But for now, considering where things are at and that it hasn't been worked into the budget yet, I think having the half-price at least is a good compromise.
Councilman Noak, Don, just one quick question for you. As I think at the time in the last meeting when you were reviewing it, you were reviewing the contract with the people that were running the harbor for the city to ensure that we didn't have any, you know, monies or any issues with that contract. Has that all been reviewed and are we all set on that end of it?
Well, there's, see, the part of their contract, all it says is that, you know, the money that they collect for the boat launch fees, they keep the money that the city collects. So unless we took it to zero, I don't see with it being half-price that it's an issue because we set the fees. They don't. But zero wouldn't, it wouldn't in effect be a fee. That would be taking something away. I mean, Bill, you could chime in if you so desire.
Trying to find his mute button.
Hey, Don, I have a question for you.
Yes.
This is Clerk Soick speaking. So the boating season has already begun and we've been charging the full $50. When would this lower rate go into effect and in what budget do we put it in?
It wouldn't be in effect till our next budget. This one's already there, so it would go, I'll make an amendment to the fee schedule, which comes into effect July 1, that this rate will take effect on April 1 of 2021.
Okay, thank you.
That's when the current launch permits all expire.
And then I guess my, the next part of my question, this is Councilman Noak again, is to the city attorney, Bill Piper. If Don is saying is any concerns with lowering of that fee based on your knowledge of what the contract has?
Well, I'm not prepared to tell you what the contract says right off the top of my head, so I guess from that perspective, I'm not. I know, I mean, I was part of helping draft that contract several years ago. I think it's kind of rolled over for, I don't know how many years now. Don could probably answer how many years it's rolled over, but I don't remember what the specific language is right now.
Mr. Mayor, I would not be opposed to tabling this until our next meeting to give the attorney a chance to review to make sure that we have that. a chance to review, to make sure that we have that due diligence taken care of.
Yeah, that's fine, and as our previous city manager had pointed out to us, that there wasn't a huge hurry on this because of the fact that the way our budget is dated, that it wouldn't be able to go into effect until 2021. So just to make sure that we're not going to have an issue with the contract with the harbor operation company, let's take a quick look at that. Let's bring it back up just really briefly at our next meeting and take care of it then.
Yep, and Councilman Noak, again, Don, I appreciate your work on this, and I am in agreement. I think that you're on target with, I think this is a really great compromise to be able to do for this, but I will probably, I will make the motion that we table this until our next meeting pending attorney review of the contract.
Johnson, second.
And just before, just a brief discussion before we take the vote, Anna, I just want to make sure that we're not going to spend another couple of weeks getting to having Bill Piper take a look at this, and then we bring it back. So what I would, maybe what I would propose is that we, maybe I would propose is that we vote to accept the proposal of a half-off fee in the event that Bill doesn't find anything wrong with the contract, because I don't, you understand, I don't want to go another two weeks and then come back. I have no idea really where all of you are with council. What your suggestion is, I don't want him to come back and say, yeah, there's no problem with the contract, this is a go, and then find out that it fails because three of us don't agree with it. And the only way to determine whether we agree with it or not, I suppose, would be to take a vote, and if we don't, if we don't take a vote, and everybody wants to just chime in to make sure that Bill's not wasting his time, I'm completely fine with that as well. We want to table this until the next meeting, so why don't we go that avenue? We've done that before, I guess, that I don't have a problem with it. This is kind of go around the table, because what we're doing is giving Bill direction. So we're tabling it, and we'll finish that vote if you like. But before we vote, I just want to make sure he's not wasting his time. So what if we do it this way? Does any council member disagree with the proposal of the half-off, as long as it doesn't have an issue with the current contract?
Councilman Mitchell's for it.
Johnson's for it.
Hess, yes.
And Noak is for it.
All right, then let's just go ahead with the vote to table it. I appreciate that.
Okay, so it was moved by Councilman Noak and seconded by Mayor Portem Johnson. So the roll call is Walagora?
Walagora, hi.
Hess?
Hess, yes.
Johnson?
Johnson, yes.
Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
And Noak?
Noak, yes.
Motion carried.
Mayor Walagora, can I ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Do you want something in writing from me, or just for me to report at the next meeting?
I think just to report at the next meeting would be fine.
Okay. I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. All right, unfinished business. Next up is new business. This is the topic of lawn care contractors. What I'm going to do to start this off is read a memo that I sent to our city manager and department heads and council earlier this week. And before I do that, I'd like to just make sure that everyone understands that this is the opinion of myself and not the rest of council. So this went with, "In response to several inquiries from residents and professional lawn care service owners, I have reviewed our city ordinance. The governor's current executive order frequently asks questions on the state website, guidance from the state regarding executive order enforcement, remarks from other mayors on the Michigan Association of Mayors' list, sir, and had discussions with legal counsel and city manager. I completely agree that our DPW should continue to perform services deemed necessary and operate the street sweeper as long as they are following COVID mitigation measures. I understand that some of these tasks are essential to keep people safe in our parks and on the bike paths, et cetera, and the storm water system from clogging. I also believe that your cleanup is an extension of that process by keeping leaves and debris from the street sidewalks and gutters. In my opinion, when we decide that city employees can perform operations following the health department's guidelines for safety, but restrict private enterprise from doing very similar work, it's sending a message that we're somehow smarter than they are, but I don't think that's true. I've also considered the following frequently asked questions on the state website, and the first one pertains to the first executive order 2020-21. The question was, may landscaping, lawn care, tree service, irrigation, and related outdoor maintenance companies operate under this order? The answer was no, except that the service is necessary to maintain and improve the safety, sanitation, and essential operations of residents. Therefore, cosmetic and non-emergency maintenance and improvements to the outdoor areas of residences and businesses are not permitted under this order. Any necessary landscaping work that is carried out while the order is in effect must be done in accordance with the mitigation measures required under Section 5(c) of the order." Then there was a new executive order, which was 2042, 202042, and the question was basically the same. May landscaping, lawn care, tree service, irrigation, and related outdoor maintenance companies operate under this order? The answer was, in nearly all cases, no. A business cannot designate workers to perform these services unless the service is necessary to maintain the safety, sanitation, and essential operations of a resident. This is a narrow exception that only permits in-person work that is strictly necessary to address a circumstance that immediately and genuinely impairs the habitability of a home during the emergency. The exception will be satisfied at most rarely. Routine concerns such as about longer grass, increasing insects, pests, and allergies do not qualify. Nor can workers leave the home to perform these services at business facilities. The exception applies only to residences. Any necessary in-person work that is permitted under the order must be done in accordance with the mitigation measures required under Section 10 of this order. The order does not prohibit homeowners from tending their own yards as they see fit. So first of all, these answers leave out the safety and sanitation of the municipal stormwater system. Secondly, it is my opinion that the answers regarding Executive Order 42 is a clear overreach of the state authority as it jeopardizes our local ability to ordinance and enforce as we feel necessary to protect the safety of our residents and the sanitation of our community. This authority was clearly handed to us by the AG's office several weeks ago. Our city ordinance regarding yard cleanup clearly states that it is written and enforced to protect public health and welfare. I support this ordinance but cannot support setting its intent aside while we believe it's impossible for professional companies to perform yard cleanup and lawn care while within the mitigation measures required for operating a business. The vast majority, if not all, of our local lawn care specialists are owner-operated businesses with very few or any employees. I recommend that the city of Alpena allows them to operate following the required mitigation measures under Section 10 of the Order 42, including restricting the number of workers present on premises to more than, to no more than is strictly necessary to perform the business's functions, keeping workers and patrons on the premises at least six feet from one another, increasing standards of cleaning and disinfection, adopting policies to prevent workers from entering the premises if they display respiratory symptoms or had contact with a person with a confirmed diagnosis of COVID-19, covering hands while pumping gas and other social distancing practices and mitigation measures recommended by the CDC. And then, of course, I request your opinions today. So with that said, I would like to open it up for discussion. I also, obviously, included the copy of our ordinance, which I won't bother reading. I've kind of taken out, taken and stated the parts, and I also put in a couple of examples of other cities who have done the same. And so I'll open it up to discussion. Because we're not in the same room, and I can't literally look at you like I normally do, why don't we, why don't we kind of set up a go-around-the-horn type of thing? I want to give, I want to give our department heads an opportunity to give us their professional opinion on this as well. And then I have a couple of follow-up items to share just from my personal contact with professionals in the city. So why don't we, why don't we go around, and we'll start with Danny Mitchell, if you would like to give your opinion, sir?
Well, thank you very much. Around our neighborhood here, we always see a lot of the landscaping people helping a number of the households around here, but we also have a lot of seniors and disabled individuals that live in this area, and they cannot physically do these yards. And right now is the time that these yards should be raked and brushed, trimmed, fertilized, all this kind of stuff like this. And then, of course, you're getting into the situation of grass cuffing, which I would hope that we wouldn't be into this that long into the thing, but I do believe that it can be done safely, because if we can be out there, they can be out there. Usually, there's not more than one or two individuals doing it. Second of all, most of the people are annual rehires as such, so they would not even have to be in contact with the landscapers. The landscapers would bill them, they would pay by mail, and the job's done. So that's really where I got. I really believe that we should be able to allow the landscapers to do the work, to help our seniors and to help the disabled individuals in our community.
All right, thank you, Dan. Danny, Amber?
I, when I read your letter, I have to say that I agree with what you said, and also with what Danny said for those reasons. Not everyone is able to take care of their own, and we hope this won't go on much longer, but we don't know. So I am in support of it. I do have a question for Bill, though, and this may be come up later. I know a few other communities have said it as essential, but then we just, we're given the update this evening. I know the Chief Jett will talk more about that. It does get me puzzled, though, if we would say they could do it, if we put businesses in position to whether our authority would be enough to protect them from a lawsuit, instead as a concern for me. Otherwise, I agree that I think, I agree with your letter, but like I said, I think we need to hear more about that first.
Okay, and I'm going to wait on the question from Bill Piper, because just in the event that someone else has a couple of questions for him as well. So keep that question in mind for Bill, and we'll go on to Mike Noak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I am also in agreement with both yourself and Councilman Hess. Here is my take on this, and one of the issues that I do have, and what I refer to is, not only for maintenance of yards, but, you know, in this time, we're looking to, it's enjoyment of the property that they have. I know from personal experience that my father really enjoyed his yard, was unable to cut his yard, and believe it or not, grass that got any higher than an inch and a half or two was a trip hazard for him because he could not walk very well. And I also see that as, you know, most of the lawn care companies in this community that I'm aware of too, I think your assessment at 90% is accurate in the point of, you know, it's a single owner, proprietor on that. So I'm in agreement with what your letter said as well.
All right, thank you. Next is Mayor Portem Johnson.
I won't take up much time, but I agree with what everyone has said. I think that most of these businesses are one, two, people on a lawn, those little contact, they don't have, they can make phone calls, what do you need done? There has to be no contact with people. And frankly, a homeowner will decide if they want to take that risk of, you know, and I don't think there's a risk with this, but if somebody was afraid that maybe they would get COVID-19 from somebody cleaning their lawn, they wouldn't, they wouldn't have the service done. So they can postpone it if they want. But I would like to speak from the, and I know earlier in the executive order, it said, you know, that, you know, allergies, all of that have no bearing in this, but I think it does. People who have allergies, and trust me, my family suffers from them, don't want to end up in an emergency room because they're having an allergic reaction to the grass or the pollens or whatever's out there because their yard hasn't been cleaned. So it does become a health issue as well. Outside of that, I think that we should allow it with all of the precautions that have been put in place for everybody else. I don't see an issue with it.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. And I want to, like I said, I want to ensure that our department heads have the opportunity to chime in, and I'll leave it up to Bill Piper if he would like to go last with how you see this from our legal counsel. He's nodding. So Chief Jett, if you're still on the line, I'd like you to have an opportunity to give us your opinion, sir.
Yes, I am here, and thank you. While I understand the positions of council, and I understand the concerns of many business owners, and the frustrations and the worries, I have to respectfully disagree with this position. For one thing, I'd like to point out is that it's not a matter of whether this can safely be done. It's not a matter about if workers can maintain a distance. It's not a matter of people not be shaking hands or anything like that. We have put a substantial amount of effort into this to, in this order, on this particular topic, and I'd have to say, out of all the provisions in the order, this one is probably one of the more clear provisions. Now, I'm sorry, it does come down to this, is whether you like the order or not, whether you agree with it or not, whether you think that it's overreaching or not. It is my understanding, and I, in fact, during a conference call this afternoon with Senator Stamos, it's my understanding that absent of a court intervention at this point, the order is valid on its face. It is a legal order by the Attorney General. And shortly after tonight, I had forwarded a press release, and I believe everybody but Councilman Mitchell, you know, should be able to see it. And that is kind of case in point that whether, if you think that it's okay, I can pretty much guarantee that the Attorney General will be getting involved. And I guess furthermore, and with all due respect, and this is really a greater concern for me, and as far as the bigger picture, with all due respect, when we get into the territory of deciding what laws we're going to follow, or what provisions of what law we're going to follow, I believe that we are in very, very dangerous territory. Whether it's the city government, whether it's the average citizen, when we start deciding which ones we're going to follow, whether we like them or not, or if it's convenient or not, I think we are on a very slippery slope, and I cannot stress that enough. And then I further want to add that I believe that if any action is taken that would contradict the order at this time, not only do I think the city, and this will be up to Bill to decide or offer his opinion, but not only do I believe that the city could be in some legal jeopardy, along with the businesses, I need to tell you without a doubt that you will be putting the police department in a very, very precarious situation, a trick box, if you will. We're going to have the Attorney General on one side saying, you shall enforce this order, and then we're going to have city council on the other saying that it's okay to do it, and right smack in the middle are going to be your police officers. I hope you understand that. We are duty-bound, we are duty-bound to enforce the law in a reasonable manner, and I'm proud to say that my department has done so in a very reasonable and prudent manner. As I said earlier, we've had several investigations. We've given out more warnings more than anything else. But with that said, we do not have the luxury or the option of deciding whether or not we're going to enforce the law. We do have discretion, that is true, but we cannot just arbitrarily But we cannot just arbitrarily thumb our noses or put on blinders when we have a directive from the most senior law enforcement official in the state, and that being the attorney general. We've taken an oath and we can again, we cannot just ignore that. I hope you understand the gravity of, of the situation here for law enforcement. And then one last thing, a couple more points and then I'm going to let it go. But I do also believe that if you allow, identify one entity, if we start picking winners and losers, if we start saying it's okay for a lawn care service or landscaping or whatever the case may be, I can pretty much guarantee that very short order, it'll be another group or another individual is, so what about my business? What about me? And are we going to justify, um, find a justification for everybody to open the doors? And I think that's something that we really need to consider. And then lastly, I just want to leave you with this is that in our system of government, there are mechanisms and legal processes in place that address such concerns. If you believe that the order is improper, you go to a court and you, you try to seek an adjunctive order. If, if you believe the governor has acted outside of her authority, you get a new governor. But I, again, I, I want to circle back to, I think that we are in very dangerous territory. If we, and I'll use the term, if we interpret the order differently, when I think it's been established that it's fairly, fairly clear on this issue. And so while I re, I have immense, immense respect for this council, I hope you all know that, I'm sure you do. But as your chief of police, I would be remiss in my duties if I said silently by here and did not offer my opinion on this matter. Every point you made, each one of you were all valid tonight. Your concerns were all, all valid. I cannot argue with any of them. However, I, again, I cannot, I cannot condone or support anything that would go against a lawful order. Again, I've taken an oath, my officers have taken an oath. We fairly and reasonably enforced the law. We have always done so, just not with this order. That has always been the practice of the Alpeno Police Department. It has been, it is now, and it always will be. And I just, I, I caution you, please don't let emotion carry this, carry this, uh, to someplace that we don't want it to go. That's all I have. I thank you for your time. I appreciate your, your, you know, giving me the opportunity to speak to you in a candid manner.
All right. Thank you. You've always appreciated your input. Any other, any other department heads like to weigh in, um, before we get into discussion with Bill Piper?
Yeah, I, I just, this is Don Gilman, building official who enforces all these codes of ordinances for the last 20 years. Actually that, you know, I know the attorney general has said that it's constitutional, but that's the attorney general. The courts actually determine constitutionality. I could be wrong, but you can ask Bill about that. But I, I was looking online today, knowing this was on the agenda and actually there was a case in, oh, 14th Circuit Court. And that's where some landscaper, actually what it was, was a composter that must've done landscaping on the side, got a ticket and his attorney took it to the circuit court in that county, Sorel Muskegon, and asked for declaratory judgment. They were turned down. This was Friday, the 17th. And what the judge wrote him up for, what the judge determined was that routine landscaping, tree service, irrigation and other related outdoor maintenance operations, these are the things that must cease. Delivery of materials to customers, herb side pickup of materials from the defendant's location by customers. And it says, so he could, he must've been selling it as business, people drive up and were buying mulch or whatever, and he was also going around delivering it to them. And the judge further said that the narrow exception to this order permits delivery of materials and in-person work that is strictly necessary to address a circumstance that immediately and genuinely impairs the ability of a home during the emergency. So this judge tied it in, he doesn't care about your yard because it's not a stay in your yard order. And believe me, I agree with everything every council person said about it. But this is just something I found today that I would thought I would throw, throw it so Bill could know it, you guys could know it. But it says the narrow exception to this order permits delivery of materials and in-person work, but only strictly necessary for the ability of the home. So if you got, they're talking about tree falls on your house, the weeds grow up so much you can't get in your door, you know, things of that nature. That being said, there's still a question of what's being enforced here or, or, you know, would the city police have to write a ticket because somebody was cutting their lawn? Whether it be a company or not, because they're violating the order just by the plain fact they're cutting their lawn, or is it going to be a violation, they're violating social distancing? Those are the things, there are suits in the process already, lawsuits over all this stuff in the courts, I'm sure. And that's what'll probably be determined at the end of the day and hopefully it'll be long after this is all over. But that was this specific court case that I found on the state police website. That's all.
Mayor, this is Rachel Smolinski. I'd like to just say a couple of things.
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, so, and, and thank you to everyone. And, um, again, you know, I, I'm glad that we can have this open discussion and, um, very respectful of everyone's, um, opinions on this. What we're looking at through, um, or from, from our perspective is, you know, that it's clearly, in the most recent FAQs that were put out, that it's clearly not exempt. And, you know, it, we're doing everything that we can to protect citizens and, um, our employees and, you know, things are really heating up in the area with, um, COVID-19. So now may not be a good time to pull back, um, on any protections. And we're hopeful though, that, um, as things start, as businesses start to come back and , um, we start to open up the economy or the state does, that, um, this may be among one of those items. And I think if we wait, um, 10 days or so, we may have a little more information. So just wanted to give you a quick perspective, even though I've, I've talked with, um, you all regarding this issue. So thank you.
Mayor. Yes, sir.
Uh, just if I could add just for a second, uh, I really was impressed with Joel's very eloquent presentation and I would agree with his legal, uh, positioning. It really puts the law enforcement in a, in a hard spot. My impact or my perspective from firing EMS is that while the rest of the state is starting to ramp down on the COVID-19 problem and Alpena is just now ramping up, I suspect in a day or a week or two weeks, we'll have twice as many cases or more in our community. And I think we might send the wrong message if, if we start to back up at this point. Uh, I, I absolutely agree all your points. And if I were the one making the executive order, maybe I wouldn't have done that, but I think she's within her rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone else before we get to Bill? Any other department heads? All right, Bill Piper, hopefully your mic is working now. Is it?
Yeah, a minute.
All right, I can hear you a little bit. There you go. Um, if you'd like to weigh in on, on some of the, uh, some of the points that were made and anything else that you would like to add?
Yes, sir. I'll try not to get, uh, uh, too long here, but I, but I think, um, you know, a little bit of explanation is needed for council to make an informed choice. Uh, first of all, regardless of how any of us might feel personally about the situation, uh, these are unprecedented times. And, um, the governor's power in the state of Michigan to make emergency declarations, there's two different statutes. There's one from 1945 and one from I believe 1974 or 76, somewhere in there. And, uh, unfortunately our, our legislature can't even agree, uh, on what power the governor has. So I think what the governor has done is, uh, took her best swipe at doing what she thinks is in all of our best interests. And, uh, for me to, uh, criticize that one way or the other, uh, personally is one thing, for me to criticize that one way or the other, uh, professionally is another thing. And the general rule is that when, you know, a rule is made, uh, by the legislature or the court, uh, citizens are bound to follow those rules, whether they like them or not. Uh, and for anybody to challenge the constitutionality of a, a government agent's power, the general course is, uh, one of a couple of different ways. One is you take that, uh, official to court or you take that agency to court and you get a ruling from the court that says, uh, the action by that agency or the rule or promulgation of that agency or individual actor of the state, uh, or even what the legislature passes is unconstitutional. And, and the rule is struck down and nobody has to follow it. We're not in a situation where, uh, as the city of Alpena, we've initiated any action against the governor to strike down what she's done. So that really doesn't apply to where we're at right now. The other way that we generally, um, I'm not, and I'm hoping this is not my mic, but, the other way you generally, uh, voice your displeasure with something that an elected official does or legislature does or a court does is you, uh, attack that particular, uh, decision through the ballot box and you, uh, have that particular person, uh, no longer serve as, as your governor or your judge or your representative or whatever, whatever action they take that you're dissatisfied with, that hasn't been ruled unconstitutional, that's, that's the way you go. So I, I was hoping when this issue first came up, uh, 10 days or so ago, that we'd have a little bit more clear definition moving forward because this issue has been raised not only in our community, but in other communities across the state. Uh, and several things that the governor has done in her executive order have been raised in different ways. Uh, and, uh, you know, certain questions have been asked of the governor and her staff and of the attorney general. Uh, and I would say this, attorney general opinions are just like any other attorney's opinion. Simply because the attorney general says, uh, he or she thinks this, uh, that doesn't mean that we're all bound to follow that, uh, until once again, there's a court decision that says that. Now, we do have a procedure in Michigan where, uh, a citizen can ask the attorney general for their specific opinion on an issue. And, um, that's generally guidance to the state, uh, that that's what should happen. But once again, that's not law. The law is only made through the legislature or through court decisions. So we're left with the attorney general, uh, saying that, uh, lawn care or landscaping is not legal. And we've got the, uh, governor of the state of Michigan under her emergency powers saying it's not legal. There are several lawsuits that are going on, uh, in different areas, including the one that, uh, Don just mentioned, and I'll get to that in a second. But there's a, a one, uh, that's been filed in federal district court where there's a group of plaintiffs, uh, several of which are lawn care, uh, companies. And they've asked for, uh, the federal district court to enter a, a temporary restraining order or preliminary injunction, uh, deciding that they should be able to continue to conduct their business until a full and final hearing is held on the constitutionality of this particular order. I'd be in much better position to advise council, uh, on the spot if that a temporary order had been issued. Generally courts do not issue temporary restraining orders or preliminary injunctions unless the person asking for it is likely to prevail on the merits. So usually, uh, although winning a temporary restraining order or preliminary injunction doesn't automatically mean you're going to win the lawsuit, if you can convince the court upfront that your position is really solid, such that he temporarily enjoins another party, uh, from doing something, it's usually a pretty good indication that you're going to win after a full and final hearing on the merits. So if that federal district court had issued such an opinion, I would be much more comfortable in saying that council taking the action, uh, that it sounds like most of our members are in support of, I'd be more comfortable advising you that that's probably, uh, something that we could do and not worry about in the short term. That case that Don cited, uh, I went and followed up and I was able to get judge's opinion, uh, but I was not able to get the order. And that opinion is a little bit more specific for the facts of that case in that county. Circuit court opinions are non-binding. And what that means is, um, in Michigan, if the court of appeals or the supreme court rules on an issue, then those opinions have what's called precedential effect. And there's a rule called stare decisis. Starre decisis says all inferior courts must follow those decisions until one of the higher courts rules otherwise. However, circuit courts, uh, their opinions aren't given that same weight. So what a judge thinks in Alcona County doesn't have to be followed by what a judge thinks in Alpena County and vice versa. But what the court of appeals says or the Michigan Supreme Court says has to be followed by the judge in Alcona County or Alpena County under that theory of stare decisis. So this opinion that came out of, uh, Muskegon, uh, looked at whether, uh, landscape businesses were subject to this order. And it, it cites a couple of different things. I'm just going to read them so that you understand what this opinion says. Even though it's not binding on the state, uh, it was, it was a lawsuit that the attorney general was involved, was involved in and did, uh, give their opinion in. The Muskegon County prosecutor's office also gave their opinion. And, uh, what it says, it cites a couple of different things. One is that like the governor's order, uh, starts out with basically the first paragraph says that this order must be construed broadly to prohibit in-person work that is not necessary to sustain or protect life. Now, the other interesting thing though, is it gives local municipalities like the city of Alpena, power for its, uh, department of public works to go out and conduct some of these same activities that these private businesses would like to conduct. So right from the get-go, uh, there's certainly an inconsistency in it saying government can do it, but everybody else can't. So, uh, most of, uh, us as citizens would take offense to that. Uh, my government can do it, but I can't under this situation, doesn't seem like it's fair, doesn't seem like it's right. However, one of the things I have to do in my job, uh, almost every day, uh, is to tell people and to advise people that just because something, um, doesn't seem fair or doesn't seem right, that doesn't always coincide with what the law provides. So sometimes people say to me, well, what do you think? Do you think that's fair? Do you think that's right? And I say absolutely it's unfair and it's unjust and I don't think it's right. However, the law is settled in this area and the law says this is how it works. And so you don't have to like it, you don't have to think it's fair, you don't have to think it's right. But as citizens, we have to follow the law until we either get it ruled unconstitutional or we get a court to overturn it or the legislature to enact a new law. So we're left with this emergency powers act that says, do these things, Michigan residents. And some of those are, are quite frankly, in my personal opinion, certainly overreaching, far-fetched, don't make sense to me. Doesn't make sense to me why, uh, uh, I can go out and cut my lawn, but I can't have the kid down the street come over and cut my lawn for 20 bucks because he would technically be subject to this order. He would be in the business of doing a landscaping activity. It seems preposterous to me that, 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 that this order was intended to do that. Uh, I think also when you look at the mitigation measure, measures that say, uh, stay away, wear masks, um, if you have symptoms, I mean, there's other things out there that could help protect, uh, not only our citizens, but our lawn care workers as well to, uh, to not have a COVID spread any further. But another thing that this judge said at the end of the order or at the end of his opinion was that the, the court stresses that the opinion that it was making is not about the wisdom of the governor's order. It's, it's not about whether that order makes sense, uh, or fair or is right or is applied evenly to the government and others, what that opinion What that opinion says is that that topic is left for further discussions in other forums. And so it lays out that you can't do this. The governor's website says you can't do this. The attorney general has said you can't do this. A circuit court judge in Muskegon County has said you can't do this. So my opinion to you would be this. It's clear as mud. It's not as simple as any of us have made it out to be. I think there's two issues that I would respectfully ask counsel to consider in whatever you decide to do. And that is, this order is only effective until April 30th. So we only have 10 additional days before hopefully this order would be set aside, and we won't have this same issue 10 days from now. So that's one consideration. And the second consideration is what it might do to Chief Jett and his men and women that serve our community, and what it might do for them in terms of having to spend an inordinate amount of time in the next week to 10 days in terms of enforcing this. And I also think it does, in fairness to Chief Jett and his men and women, I think it does put them in a difficult position on a temporary basis, because we are asking him, if we vote this in, him and his staff, to not enforce an order that, as sworn officers of the law, they believe is a good order, is an effective order, is a constitutional order. So it's not as easy as it sounds. Once again, I don't have any qualms with anything any of our members, and our mayor has said. I think I personally feel the same way as most of you feel. I don't understand why these lawn care businesses, under this governor's order, are not allowed to operate. I think allowing them to operate with mitigation measures makes sense. I just can't tell you with certainty that the action that you take is ultimately legal. And so with that being said, I think all of you will vote in good conscience. And hopefully, within 10 days, we know with a little bit more certainty what can or can't be done. But I just don't know that it's worth, for 10 days worth of time, I'm not sure that it's worth passing this. And when I say that, I don't disagree with what you would pass. I'm not suggesting that what you would pass would be illegal. I can't tell you that. I don't think anybody can tell you that with certainty. It's too unsettled right now. I just don't know that it's worth doing it if we're only talking about 10 days. I would answer any questions that anybody has in that regard, but I'm just not sure that doing that is the best thing to do.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
So I have a question for you, and this is, maybe we're getting a little bit borderline with this question as far as being informational.
Okay.
What Chief Jett said is, holds an incredible amount of weight with me. I don't want to put him in a position like that. We've had disagreements before, but never maybe to this magnitude. So a question that I have for Bill Piper on the, on small communities and cities not enforcing state laws has happened for decades. Probably the most prevalent one that I can recall is the city of Coldwater, for many years, did not enforce the helmet law for motorcycles long before the state allowed them. So when that type of thing happens, or these other cities that we read specifically on the lawn care, when they do that, where does that, do they somehow have a buy-in from their police department? How are their police departments not violating their oath by having rules like that in place? Do you know?
Well, let me give you an example, and it might help counsel make its decision. And that is this, many, many years ago, the city of Ann Arbor decided to make possession and use of marijuana within sighted city limits a civil infraction. And that was directly contrary to state law, which said the use of marijuana and possession of marijuana were misdemeanors. And so it put their police force in a difficult position, because writing somebody a civil infraction ticket under the city ordinance, when you knew that particular person was violating state law by possessing or using marijuana, put them in a tough spot. But as a community, they had buy-in, and they decided that they weren't going to treat people the same under state law if they were caught within the limits of the city of Ann Arbor. And that went on for many years, and the state was aware that the city of Ann Arbor had made that decision. And the state did not challenge the city of Ann Arbor on that decision. They let that go on. Now, what officers did in their discretion, from an enforcement standpoint, was they made a decision on the street like they're forced to do almost every day that they're on the street. And that is to decipher which individuals may be needed to be charged under state law, and which individuals should be given a city ordinance ticket. And part of that was basically the officer just having to make a call on the street as to what seemed most appropriate in that situation. But it was also, I believe, in conjunction with the city of Ann Arbor officials, and also, I think, the Washtenaw County Prosecutor's Office, which also bought into the fact that it didn't make sense from a system standpoint in their community, and from a resource standpoint in their community, to spend time bringing people, primarily young people, college-educated people, students, into the court, and having those people convicted of misdemeanor offenses for the use or possession of marijuana. Now, obviously, Michigan law has changed now. And finally, what occurred in Ann Arbor many, many years ago, finally, I guess, for lack of a better term, maybe got through to the rest of the state. And the rest of the state ultimately, you know, we have legalized marijuana now. But that's the best example I can give you, where a community decided to enact an ordinance that was directly contrary to state law, and where the state never challenged that, and never did anything to the local folks to stop them from doing that. They didn't make the city of Ann Arbor prosecute people. They didn't make Washtenaw County prosecute people under state law. They let it go. So that's the best example I can give you, where a community passed an ordinance directly contrary to state law, and did something less than what state law provided for, and ultimately was never challenged by the state of Michigan. So if this counsel says we're going to do something different than this executive order, and we're going to let these businesses operate, it still doesn't take out the fact that Chief Jett's men and women, who are there every day, have to deal with how this is going to be enforced for this next period of time. But it is an example where a municipality took an action that appeared to be contrary to state law, and that never got challenged by the state of Michigan.
If I may respond to that.
Yeah.
With all due respect, and Bill brings up some very valid points, but I can tell you right now is that, again, we take our oath very seriously, and that it is not my intent to be at odds with counsel. However, it's my position is that we are sworn to enforce laws of the state along with this community, and we will do so in an appropriate manner. So I feel that I am duty-bound to tell you that. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chief. And probably the only other thing I wanted to point out, specifically because I know that we have some guests from that profession monitoring our meeting, which I appreciate, is that no matter what the city does, even in the city limits, there are two other law enforcement agencies that they will not be protected from, so to speak, using protection, as a lack of better terms. The county and the state will still follow the same guidelines that they're following now. So with that, and with Chief Jett's heavy concerns, you can obviously tell I did not have a lot of dialogue with him before I wrote my memo or had this meeting. As a matter of fact, I talked with very few people within the city, basically the mayor pro temp and the city manager I had discussions with. So everyone's supportive of my memo. Actually, I really appreciate that. It's not very often that I put something out to counsel and all five of us agree with. So with that said, I'd like to have everyone's opinion again. I'm very concerned with Chief Jett's comments, and I want to make sure that he understands that I support him and his police force. So I really don't, as much as I want to continue with my proposal for all of the reasons that I put in my proposal and some that I kept to myself, I really, I have a difficult, I have a difficult time going against what Chief Jett and his officers are sworn to do. So from my perspective, I am going to pull my support from my own memo, just basically, specifically for those reasons. And if anybody else would like to, we can go back around the corner. If anybody else would like to chime in. Let's, I guess, having said that, let's just make it easy and go back around so we're not interrupting each other. So start again with Annie Mitchell. Do you have any comments on that, sir?
I agree with what Chief Jett and Chief Forbush are talking about. And yes, we all swore ourselves to support the Constitution of the state of Michigan. But just for the heck of it, we also swore to support the Constitution of the United States, which includes the Bill of Rights. So that has to be kept in mind as well. And I'm looking forward to the probability that some of these are going to be declared unconstitutional. This is for future more than anything else. Thank you.
Amber Hess.
Yeah, Councilwoman Hess here. I'm excited. I still agree with the material in the letter, but considering what the chief has said, and also the possible legal ramifications, and the timeline that we're looking at for 10 days, which this could all change, at this time, it just doesn't make sense, I think, to move forward with that.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Noak.
Councilwoman Noak here. I am in agreement with Councilwoman Hess and the mayor. After hearing from Chief Jett and from our legal counsel on his opinion and stuff like that, well, I agree with the body of the memo and where I feel that we should be able to help our citizens. I too support our officers and would never do anything, and should not support anything that would put them in a position like this. So, you know, while supporting the theory of the memo, I support Chief Jett and the police officers more.
All right. Thank you, Mike, and Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson here. I would like the police department to know that they have my support 100%. And I would never want to put them in a position, I guess, where they have to look the other way or go against the council's position. So I agree with everything that's in the body of this letter as well. I think that this was an overstep by the state of Michigan. We have 10 days to go, and my hope is that if the stay-at-home order continues, that some of these policies that are in there are lifted. So with that being said, I support your withdrawal of this particular topic. Thank you.
All right. Well, again, thank you very much, counsel, for supporting my proposal. And thank you, Joel, for weighing in. Like I said, if you just let this go and not weigh in, then we would have obviously put you in a position that none of us would want you to be in. So we will continue, basically, as we have. And as everyone else said, that the state hits things up a little bit here in about 10 days. And in the meantime, I will continue to approach this from a different perspective, as Bill had stated. Okay, so I don't think we need to vote on anything, because no one is going to, is going to put a support out there for that. Again, I appreciate everyone from the profession as well that has reached out to me and hopefully has understanding. Trying to find my, I think that was the last thing on our agenda. So what we're going to do now, just briefly, before everyone goes, everyone clicks off, is that we are going to adjourn this meeting. But I believe our IT department is going to keep it live, because it is still falls under the guideline. Open Meetings Act. IT, if you could find the feedback that we're getting. And we're going to go into closed session. We'll come back to this meeting. The closed session is going to be typically for informational purposes only. We will come back and have any public record of a decision of any kind. With that, I would like to adjourn the closed session, please.
I will, we adjourned a closed session to discuss water litigation and bio refinery tax issue.
Johnson, second.
Hess?
Hess, yes.
Johnson?
Johnson, yes.
Mitchell? I didn't hear that one.
Mitchell, yes.
Noak?
Councilman Noak, yes.
And Walagora?
Walagora, aye.
Motion carried.
Do we leave here, just leave here? I guess.
That was what I was told to do, yeah.
Yeah, Cindy, just leave the meeting, and then you're going to join that other link that I sent.
Hi, Bill.
You guys, yeah, you just hit the hang-up. The little telephone guy, just hang that up, leave the meeting. Yeah, you just hit the hang up. Uh, the, the little telephone guy, just hang that up, leave the meeting.
Well, I don't have a little telephone guy.
Well, but if, if you touch the screen, it'll appear. Because you're on iPad.
Yeah.
And you should get a little.
I'm still touching.
Should get little full icons to show up on the bottom. Or just close the app. I can kick you out.
Kick me off.
I will do that.
All right. Bye-bye.
Bye.
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 Hello.
Here we are. Three of us. I move adjourn. Wait, because is Anna here?
Anna's here.
Anna's here, okay. I move adjourn.
Second, Cindy.
That's her.
John.